Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our council meeting. July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Call please.
Brewster?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Burden?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Bennett?
Here.
Parton?
Here.
Crowe? Thompson?
Here.
All right, next we have the invocation given by John Meadows from Christian Chapel Four Square Church. Welcome.
All right, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you that you sent your Son into this world to save us and to bring us into your presence by what you did for us when you saved us on the cross. Lord, I just pray that your Spirit be with every man and woman in this room and all the different departments that they represent. And Lord, I pray that your Spirit make their spirit to be that excellent Spirit. And Lord, we can come together and make the city of Hayesville the city that you want it to be. We thank you, Lord, we can live in this free country that's about to turn two-hundred-and-fifty years old. May we continue to be the light to the world and a light right here in Kansas in Jesus' name, amen?
Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pleasurable allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have a special order of business, a proclamation of July as Park and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Hayesville, Kansas. And whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity throughout increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Hayesville recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreational resources. Now therefore, let it be resolved by myself that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Hayesville, Kansas.
We have a lot of great parks and recreation areas, and it's definitely a joy to have those spaces available in our city. So thank you to the recreation staff as well. All right, next we have presentation and approval of minutes, eight minutes of June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Gusman Bennett?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of June nine, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
We have motion of second to approve the minutes of June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Upstayed.
Next we have item one, public comment. Any member of the public would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number two, approval of license and bonds. We have none today. Item three, introduction of ordinances and resolutions. A, an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of Hayesville, Kansas, as previously authorized by resolutions numbers twenty-four dash zero-one, twenty-four dash zero-two, twenty-four dash zero-three, twenty-four dash zero-four, twenty-four dash zero-five, twenty-four dash zero-six, twenty-four dash zero-eight, twenty-four dash zero-nine, twenty-four dash ten, and twenty-four dash eleven of the city, and providing for the collection of such special assessments. Garth, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm Herman Bell, the city's bond counsel. The item before you and I tonight relates to the ordinance to formally levy the special assessments that were requested for projects that were authorized by those resolutions that the mayor mentioned. As part of this process, the city at your meeting last month approved a statement of final cost, as well as provided for notice to be given to property owners to let them know about this action that was going to happen tonight. That notice of this action was both published locally, as required by state law, as well as mailed out to the affected property owners. So the action for you tonight both relates to this ordinance, but before then is when we will actually need to hold the public hearing to provide for an opportunity for comment for many of the public who showed up and want to speak on these assessments. So at this time, I will ask if you can open the public hearing related to the special assessments for these projects and give anyone who would like to speak the opportunity to be heard on that.
All right, sounds great. All right, so we now formally open the public hearing related to levying special assessments for the cost of certain internal improvements previously authorized by the governing body. Have any council members had any outside contacts regarding this assessment?
No.
Do any members of the council have a conflict of interest? Has the city received any written or electronic communications on this matter?
No.
Now is the time for any member of the public to speak. If anyone here, if anybody's here would like to speak, now is your time. Seeing none. If there are no other members of the audience wishing to speak concerning this issue, I now formally close the public hearing. Would, what would the council like to do with those ordinance? Or would you like to continue speaking, or are we just going past this ordinance?
I'll speak for a few more minutes, if that's okay, and then I'll open it up for comments. So this ordinance formally levies the special assessments against the properties served by these improvements. The improvements consist of six projects located in the Wheatland Village addition. In addition, there are four projects located in the Grand and Plaza addition, for a total of ten projects. Once this ordinance is passed, then it will formally levy the assessments against the affected property owners. But first, it will give those property owners an opportunity to prepay all their portion of the special assessments if they would like to. That prepayment period will run until August the eleventh at noon. Any special assessments that have not been prepaid by that date and that time will formally be levied on the affected property owners and repaid over a period of twenty years, along with interest. After that August eleventh time period, the city will formally take the actions to start the bond sale process in order to issue the bonds to permanently finance the costs of these projects, as well as to retire and pay off a couple of the temporary notes that the city previously issued to provide the construction financing for these projects. The schedule for that bond sale is anticipated to occur on September the eighth, and that will be the date that bids from investment banks will formally be received by the city for the sale of those bonds. Based on the best bid received, in essence, the lowest interest rate to the city, the bond sale will be awarded to that best, the submitter of the best bid at your meeting that night. Thereafter, the schedule for the bond issue is that it's scheduled to close on September the thirtieth, with the temporary notes to repay the following day for the proceeds of those bonds. So that's kind of the big picture there, but this is one of the important steps related to that bond sale. So with that being said, I'll pause for any questions or comments that you may have regarding either the assessments, the ordinance, or the bond sale process in general.
Council, have any questions? Seeing none.
Okay. I would request a motion and a second to approve the ordinance.
What would council like to do? Councilperson Parton?
I make a motion, we approve the ordinance presented.
Second.
The motion, second to approve the ordinance, levying special assessments as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes. All right, thank you for coming out.
Yes, thank you all very much.
All right, next we have item B, an ordinance denying a request for a vacation of portions of the flooded utility easement of certain real property located within the city of Hayesville, Kansas. Kayla?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to vacate portions of flooded utility easement on the north side of nineteen forty East Dedrick Avenue. The applicant is requesting this vacation to come into conformance with city code. Earlier this year, the city's building inspector noticed that an accessory structure and three AC units were built in the utility easement. They encroach on that easement by about five and a half feet, and no building permits were pulled for construction or installation. And according to a code, we can't have any structures in our easements, and permits were required, sorry, even for the AC units. So on June twelfth, the planning commission held a public hearing to review and ultimately recommend a denial of this vacation as presented, as multiple utility companies objected to the vacation. The commission also recommended denial, also recommended that no enforcement actions be taken against the property owners, because denial of the request will result in the accessory structure and AC units remaining in violation of city code. The property owners will be required to relocate the accessory structures and AC units upon request by any utility company, but they would stay where they are for now. Approval of the request will go against utility company recommendations and will result in a costly expense of utility relocation for the property owners. So I'm asking for a motion to adopt the recommendation of denial, and I can stand for any questions.
Council, have any questions? What would council like to do? Councilmember Walters?
I make motion that we accept the recommendation as listed.
We have motion of second to approve the recommendation as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Kayla. All right, next we have item four, notices and communications, a governing body announcements. Anybody have any announcements?
Nope, see, he's not here.
Yes, he's not here. I have a couple senior center announcements. Female self-defense class is June sixteenth. The luau dinner is this Friday, June eighteenth. Hustle outing, June twenty-second.
July.
July.
It is July.
It is July.
Right. July. Hustle outing, July twenty-second. Bucket ball with Bree, July thirty-first. Appetizer contest, July thirty-first. Painting pass, July thirty-first. Some recurring events, line dancing, coffee and conversation, table games, crafts, exercise classes, Alheimers support group, and crafting. Next we have a memo regarding new business license. Memo regarding door-to-door licenses.
I have a question on that.
Yes, which one?
Mighty Box. Where's that at? Is that in the?
Mighty Box is the one along Broadway.
So, did we figure that all out, or?
Yeah, there's no longer, the trailers and everything have been removed.
Okay, but what are they gonna put in there now?
It'll still be storage as it was before.
So are they gonna put boxes in there?
No.
Okay. All right, I just checked.
It's still a business name.
Okay, all right.
All right, so we have a, item C, memo, door-to-door licenses. D, Seasford County Fire Department Station Thirty-four, monthly report. And E, economic development quarterly report. Daniel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your pocket, you'll find the second quarter economic development report. Just wanted to give a brief update on the CDVG rehabilitation grant since details are not listed in the report for that. We have received ten applications which could potentially utilize all available grant funds if approved. As of the end of the day today, we have eight of these applications that have been approved. Six of those eight have been notified, and I am waiting for callbacks on the other two to give them the good news. The final two applications are in queue to be reviewed by SCED, and I have already reviewed those two. We also have the notice of approval for the request for release of funds from the Kansas Department of Commerce. This allows SCED to begin inspections of the approved properties. So lots of positive news there. The latest update on Coppertel is that we, they still plan to complete the residential area in twenty twenty-six regarding an update on the laundromat. The property owner is meeting with the architect this week, and that project is moving forward. So that, along with the report, is what I have for you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Daniel? Seeing none. Thank you for sharing all that great information. All right, next we have, let's see, item five, old business, we have none. Item six, other business, a presentation of the twenty twenty-four audit report. Michael, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having me here today. My name is Michael Gerber, I'm a partner at Forest Mazars. We do complete a financial statement audit for your, for the city's financials on a regular basis. Here today to present those final numbers, and I would like to thank your finance team, Angie, and Will as well, giving us what we need to do our work and have this report ready for you here today. You know, just, I just want to go through a few of the highlights. I think you do have the materials in your, in your packet there. Certainly don't need to follow along word for word, I'm not going to reveal that much detail. But I will just mention, you know, if you look at financial statements on a regular basis, most of the time they're in what we call accrual basis, so they include accounts receivables, long-term debt, capital assets, things like that. Your statements are more on a cash basis, so I want to point that out just as a difference between what maybe you might be used to seeing. And also, within our opinion, you'll see the word adverse, and usually that's a red flag. People don't like to see that within an opinion, but because you operate on a cash basis, that's okay. All right, you're still, you still have a clean opinion, the opinion that you want, which is on this cash basis. So we just want to point that out if you ever really read through the narrative of our opinion. As far as the numbers go, it's on page, page four of the actual statements. It looks like this, and you don't need to follow along, I'm just going to point out that that's probably a schedule that might have some interest to you. Shows your beginning cash balance, your receipts and expenditures for the year, and then the ending cash balance. As far as the activities go, really, pretty much status quo year over year. You do have some, obviously, some notes that the gentleman just before me was mentioning, notes that you borrow from, temporary notes, and you'll have some more longer-term bonds that are getting issued this year, so you have those fluctuations. You also have some capital projects that take place on a regular basis, so you'll see an increase in expenditures for twenty twenty-four over what you had in twenty twenty-three. But other than that, pretty much status quo year over year. For this group, if you'd really like to get into the details, starting on page seventeen, or all the budget to actual for all of your funds, so you can really kind of drill down and see what the numbers look like, the receipts and expenditures by fund, if you really want to get into those details. And then finally, what I'll mention is every year, we do a number of walkthroughs for your cash outflows, inflows, payroll. Want to make sure you have good controls over those assets, right? Some number of different eyes kind of looking on the payments and those receipts. Based on our testing, we didn't have anything that rises to the level of a material weakness or a significant deficiency, something that we would have a written comment about within our letter. Based on our testing, we did not find anything that rises to that level of an issue. So with that, that covers my prepared remarks, but I will stand for questions.
Are there any questions for Michael? Seeing none. Appreciate you coming out and sharing the audit with us.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, next we have item V, consideration of sidewalk repairs. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This year's sidewalk evaluation identified two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet of sidewalk throughout the city having major deficiencies. Therefore, we are seeking authorization to contract with South Central Ceiling to replace these for a total of thirty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, and this will be paid out of park and recreation sales tax funds. I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Tony? Councilperson Parton?
If there aren't none, I make a motion to accept the bid from South Central Ceiling for thirty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars for sidewalk repair.
Second. We have motion of second to approve the sidewalk repair consideration as presented. Any questions? Or questions, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item C, consideration of repairs to the salt and sandbin.
So recently, the canopy for the salt and sandbin was damaged during a windstorm. We had reached out to various vendors to obtain quotes, but we only obtained a quote from Donglier Construction. We were seeking authorization to accept the bid from Donglier Construction in the amount of fifty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The city does have a twenty-thousand-dollar storm deductible, and the remaining costs will be submitted through our insurance. The deductible will be paid out of street and park material funds. I stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions? What would council like to do? Councilmember Bennett?
Make a motion, we approve the repairs to the salt and sandbin.
Second.
The motion of second to approve the, or accept, accept the bid for the repairs to the salt and sandbin as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next, I'm D, presentation of the twenty twenty-six budget. Approval of notice to exceed the revenue-neutral rate and publication of notice of public hearings.
We've got basically a presentation I put together, just go over with you and then answer any questions you may have on the budget. In the council packet, we did put in there basically the required document from the county on our intention regarding whether we're going to exceed the revenue-neutral rate or not. The proposed budget that I had before you does exceed the revenue-neutral rate. Also, in the council packet, it's a brief memo from me with a couple of highlights. I've got more in the presentation, and then also you'll find the working budget in the council packet. It's the one that looks like an Excel spreadsheet, and it's got the detail for each fund, both revenues and expenditures and balances at the beginning of the year and carryover. And as you go through that, the first column in there is actual numbers from twenty twenty-four. And we've got the budgeted numbers from twenty twenty-five, which was the approved budget from last year for this year. And then we've got the revised numbers for twenty twenty-five, which is where I put what we think we're actually going to receive this year or spend this year. Those are our estimates, which then provides our estimated beginning balance for the twenty twenty-six column, which is the next column on there. So if you're looking through that and you have any questions, you can always call me, email me, whatever you'd like to do. For today, for the presentation, we're going to go ahead and go over a mill levy comparison. We're going to look at assessed valuation, the city sales tax estimate, staff adjustments, personnel detail. Some of the projects, we're not going to go over every project that's budgeted. We're going to look at debt service, where we stand there, go over the next steps, and of course, have time for any questions that you have. The mill levy comparison, it's a little bit small. If you can or cannot read it up there, I'll go over some of the highlights. In twenty twenty-five, we levied three million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, twenty-four dollars. Our mill rate that was approved last year was forty-point-four-five-one, and by the time we got the final valuation from the county, it came back at forty-point-four-four-five certified mills. For twenty twenty-six, the proposed budget, we've got total dollars levied, four million, nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, and that comes up to a mill rate of forty-point-three-four-three. Our next slide we have here shows our twenty twenty-four final valuation of ninety-two million and our June twenty twenty-five valuation of ninety-nine million, three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, an increase of seven million, three-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, which is an eight-point-zero-two percent increase in our total assessed valuation. City sales tax, I've got the same estimate for next year as I had for this year. The, if you've seen on the reports that go out, our estimated revenues, I've estimated those down six percent. So I'm only estimating that we'll receive ninety-four percent of that this year. But next year, based on some of the other things I've seen in the county and things I've read, I'm going to put it back at the same thing I estimated it for this year. And that's not coming out real well as far as the columns I thought I had, but a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand total, with half going to street, forty percent going to parks and rec, and ten percent going for a property tax reduction. Staff adjustments, I've just got one of notice. At this point in time, we're budgeting for an additional police officer instead of filling the open captain position. So all the same number of certified officers, but we're going to go this next year with the chief and two lieutenants, and I have a captain for this next year. Personnel detail, this is history from last year. Council did approve, and we implemented the pay chart based on the salary survey in May of twenty twenty-four. And then also in twenty twenty-four, we had a step increase for individuals that had a satisfactory performance evaluation, and that happens in the first full pay period in July. So that was last year. In this year's budget, what was budgeted is a step increase with satisfactory performance evaluation in July, and that's first full pay period in July's right now, so that'll be the next paycheck the employees get in twenty twenty-five. In the proposed twenty twenty-six budget, I've got same thing. Step increase with satisfactory performance evaluation. Years and years ago, when we first started, basically every year we tried to budget, a step increase one year and a cost of living adjustment the next year. I looked at the step increase versus the cost of living for twenty twenty-six, and if you look at the CPI for the Midwest region year over year, ending with the month of May, which is the latest data that's out, the CPI increase was a two-point-four percent. So what I've got in the proposed budget is a step increase, which in the pay chart, if you remember, we went over it, each step is three percent higher than the previous step. So that's what I've got in the proposed budget, a step increase instead of a cost of living. And I think for next year's budget, I'll look at the cost of living. Maybe we'll get back on the pattern of going one, one one year and one the other. Capital outlay and projects, once again, I've just highlighted a few, and if you look through the line item detail in the budget, you may see some big differences between the twenty twenty-five approved budget and the twenty twenty-six proposed. One of those you would see is in buildings and grounds, it's in the general fund. And one of the main reasons is we budgeted, I think, forty thousand last year, well, for twenty twenty-five, and for twenty twenty-six, it's closer to ninety thousand. There are a few changes in there, plus a fifty-five thousand dollars to do a full roof coating for the city hall building that we're in right now. We've got some leaks, if you walk through the building, you can see, and we've had roofers come out to try and address those and fix those, but it's getting to the point where I think we need to put a new coating on the entire roof. Wastewater, there are quite a few projects within wastewater year to year. As you know or remember, we do try to do some cured-in-place pipe each year and do some manhole lining. For twenty twenty-six, we've got a couple items that need work. One would be the south clarifier to rehab that, we've got a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars in the budget, and adding a channel for the rotary press, which is the newer dewatering facility that we have. We'd like to add a channel in there, and that's estimated in at sixty thousand. When that facility was built, it was built where we could easily add in new channels as we needed to expand. Within the water fund, we've got water line replacement at Sandy and A Street, estimated construction cost of $292,985. We've got one acid wash for a well, $30,000. Sidewalks, we do have the continuation of the sidewalk on South Main going from where we've ended currently to River Birch Street. We're working with the county because they've got a drainage project they want to do in that same area, so we're working with them on timing, and hopefully we get that one done soon, but we're a little bit at the, a little bit under the control of the county on that one, just because we don't want to do them at the same time. Streets, the big one. This is Meridian Avenue, widened to three lanes from Grand Avenue down to 79th Street. This is the project that we have federal funding through WAMPO. It's currently in the WAMPO tip for federal fiscal year 2027, which begins October 1st, 2026. Currently, we've got about 66, 67% federal funding on that project. It's a really large project, has different projects complete within the tip. We're going to look at getting that funding up to the maximum allowable of 80% through WAMPO, which reduce our cost by quite a bit. But if you look at the capital improvements fund in the materials that are in the packet, it's Fund 36, and a large portion of this is in the 2026, you can see. And depending on the amount that we get, federal funding, if we can increase that, that could reduce that amount, but it looks like we'll probably have to use that full amount that's in there, plus potentially some of the money from the street sales tax. So that's just something that we'll watch, depending on how much we get from WAMPO, how much of a federal percent we get. Hopefully, we can get that moved closer to the 80. Debt service. This just shows our general obligation bond principal outstanding as of June 30th of this year, $7,035,000. Our payment, which most of those pay on October 1st, is $850,000 principal, which would put us at $6,185,000 principal outstanding. However, that number will not be the same that it got there in June, June 30th of 2026, because it'll be impacted by the bond issue that Garth Herman presented, that we're working on to bond the temporary notes that were for the construction of Wheatland Village and Grandin Plaza additions. Our temporary notes at this point, you can see what we've got. Wheatland Village and Grandin Plaza are both there, they'll be bonded this year, and then Lakefield Edition, the temporary note amount is $2,705,000 for a total of $7,500,000 in temporary notes. The next one here is the Activity Center, Certificates of Participation. At June 30th of this year, we have $2.4 million left in principal. Our payment, which is a November 1st payment on the principal and half that interest, we've already paid half the interest, that'll take us down to $2,225,000 on June 30th next year. As far as the budget process goes, once the legislature instituted the revenue neutral rate legislation, it changed the whole budget process. But our next steps would be, if counsel approves, to inform the county clerk of our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So we'd do that by a motion, and I've got a sample motion later in this presentation. We would state our intent to exceed, we would include the date, time, and location of the public hearing for the revenue neutral rate public hearing, and we would state the proposed tax rate in mills. I would then publish, have published a notice of public hearing, which is a combined one. The state allows for us to do one publication, which both informs of the revenue neutral rate public hearing and the regular budget public hearing. So I'd publish that both on our website and in the Times Sentinel as required. We would hold a revenue neutral rate hearing and adopt a resolution to exceed revenue neutral rate by roll call vote, and we would then hold, after that, we would then hold a regular budget hearing and adopt the budget. And based on what the state legislature has assigned for dates to do that, it has to be between August 20th and September 20th. So based on our council meeting schedule, we would do, hold those public hearings at our September council meeting on September 8th. All that being said, once we get to the point, here's a sample motion. I move to approve our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, set the revenue neutral rate public hearing and budget hearing for Monday, September 8th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at City Hall, and state the proposed tax rate to be 40.343 mills as presented. If there are any questions, I'd like to be able to answer those for you today, and if you've got specific questions on a different funds that the department has put together, then they can answer those as well.
Are there any questions for Will? Seeing none. I'd like to put the sample motion back up. Counsel, first, pardon?
I move to approve our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and set the revenue neutral rate public hearing and budget hearing for Monday, September 8th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at City Hall, and the proposed tax rate will be 40.343 mills as presented.
Second.
We have motion, a second, to approve the, those to exceed the revenue neutral rate and publication of the notice of public hearings as presented. Any discussion? Question, please?
Rooster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Will. Next, we have item seven, Department of Reports, A, Administrative Services. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are currently taking applications for Citizen of the Year. This will be awarded to a volunteer during the Fall Festival in October. If you know someone, you can nominate them through the webpage, or if you need a paper form, you can get one here at City Hall, just give me a call. We will take applications through the end of the month. We are also taking applications for our new three-year street banner program. This is open through the end of the month as well. If anyone is interested, they can contact me. It is a three-year program, and these will start in the fall, with our new, our new season will start with the fall, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Next, item B, City Clerk, Angie. Item C, Police Chief.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to announce our visiting officer this evening is Officer Priti Palima. He's out there, so say hi to him as you go by. He's working the night shift currently, always has a smile on his face, so it's great to see. Also, our National Night Out event that we have every year will be held on August 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 over an area there north of the pool and also in the pool. We'll be doing the usual, we'll have some swimming, we'll have some food over there, bottled water, encourage everybody to come on out and meet the officers and have a good time in the community that night. Hopefully, it won't be blistering hot this year, so that's all we've got.
Next, Chief. Next, we have item D, Public Works, Billy.
And the recycling center will be open on Saturday, July 26th, from 10:00 AM to noon.
Thank you. Next, we have item E, Recreation, Rob.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lasky registration for the 2025-2026 school year is open. You can register online at hayesvillerec.com or at the Activity Center. Youth soccer and volleyball registration is open as well. This Saturday, July 19th, we'll have our rec appreciation pool party from 6:30 to 9:30 PM. It is free for any Hayesville residents who want to attend, and then the pool will close for the season on August 10th. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rob. Next, we have item eight, appointments. We have none tonight. Item nine, executive session, there is none scheduled. Item 10, review of expenditures, A, summary of June expenditures.
I move to receive and file the June expenditures.
Second. We have motion, a second, to receive and file the June expenditures. Any discussion? Question, please?
Rooster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next, item 11, the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda. Counsel, my Benner?
Do we approve the consent agenda?
Second. We have motion, and a second, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Question, please?
Rooster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.